Good afternoon, everyone. Today is October 8th, 2024. This is a City of Prescott City Council Voting Meeting. And it's great to see nearly a full council chamber. So welcome, everyone, who's come to listen to, obviously, something that means a lot to them. And as we proceed through our agenda, we'll be hearing from a number of people. So we'll start with any announcements or introductions, Mayor Protam.
Ew. So let's talk a little bit. Number one, Boards and Commission vacancies. The City of Prescott is currently seeking applications for the following boards, committees, and commissions. The first is the Building Safety Advisory and Appeals Board. With the term ending in March 2027, there are two vacancies. You must be a Prescott resident to serve on the board. The second is the Community Development Block Grant, also called the CDBG Citizens Advisory Committee. The term goes through March of 2026. There is one vacancy, and you do not need to be a Prescott resident to serve on this board. Applications are due to the city by 5:00 PM on Friday, October 25th. Well, that's a repeat, at 5:00. For more information, visit the city's website at the City of Prescott Boards and Commissions Vacancies, or contact the city clerk's office at 928-777-1437. The second issue here is the General Plan Comment Period. This is a reminder that the City of Prescott is seeking public comment on the draft 2025 General Plan document. The required public comment period lasts 60 days, beginning September 23rd and ending on November 21st. The next and final General Plan Open House will take place on Thursday, October 24th, 2024, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM at the Prescott Public Library Founder's Room at 215 East Goodwin Street. A virtual meeting room has been created for the public to review the entire draft plan and to provide comments. Go to planprescott.com. Citizens may also ask questions by emailing hello@planprescott.com. The last item is the Public Safety Open Houses. We are continuing our series of informational public open houses about public safety in Prescott, outlining details of Proposition 478, which will be on the November ballot. The open houses will feature information boards and handouts. Staff members will be available to answer questions. The next open house meeting will be Saturday, October 12th, Fire Station 74. The address is 7247 Smoke Tree Lane. To learn more about Prescott's public safety needs and to view documents and presentations about Proposal 478, and for a list of all upcoming open house meetings, go to participateprescott.com. And remember, when your ballot comes out for the Prescott issue, start at the bottom up. Bottom up, remember that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. We'll now have an invocation from Pastor Dan Hurlbert from the Prescott United Methodist Church, followed by Pledge of Allegiance from Councilman Gambogi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, friends. Let us pray. Great and wonderful God in whom we live and move and have our being. As we gather here today, we seek your guidance and wisdom. We ask that you bless our city and all who live here. Grant us clarity of thought and unity of purpose as we discuss the matters before us. Help us to listen with open hearts and minds, embracing different perspectives. May our decisions reflect justice, compassion, and a commitment to the common good. Inspire us to work collaboratively, fostering a spirit of service and community. Let our actions promote peace, prosperity, and the well-being of all. During this final week of Hispanic Heritage Month, we give you thanks for our Hispanic neighbors and all of their contributions to our society and culture. We lift to you our nation at this time in our history. We pray for wisdom and discernment, and we pray for peace on earth. Thank you for the opportunity to serve others. May we be instruments of positive change in our beloved city and your world. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible and liberatory, just as it is. Thank you, Ted. We'll now have a roll call, please.
Mayor Good?
Present.
Mayor Protam Cantelmi?
Here.
Councilwoman Freworth?
Here.
Councilman Gambogi?
I am here.
Councilman Montoya?
I'm still here.
Councilman Moore?
Here.
And Councilmember Rusing?
Here.
All are present.
Okay, we'll move on to the open call to the public.
Thank you, Mayor. The City of Prescott welcomes public engagement. Residents may comment and address the council regarding matters not included on the posted agenda during the call to the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total, with the following stipulations. Citizens will be limited to addressing council on the same topic only four times in total. If a topic has been addressed more than five times by different speakers, the mayor may limit future discussion on this topic. And topics of a primary national concern may be limited at the discretion of the mayor. And I have three comment cards. First is Jim Garing.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm the guy that wrote you the long email last week with two very long, complicated attachments. Those attachments are really important for a couple of reasons. One of them is a letter from our concerned groups, two attorneys, from two and a half years ago to the city, the details where the city was going awry, in our opinion, with regard to how they were processing the View's apartment complex by Lafferty Development. The other attachment is a copy of the agreement that you, the City of Prescott, have with the Prescott Lakes Community Association, the M3 Companies, and the Prescott Golf Club. So why are we concerned? How many Prescott Lakes people here? Why are we concerned? We're concerned because all development, according to our agreement, within Prescott Lakes, has to be according to the agreement and the Prescott Lakes Master Plan. The Prescott Lakes Master Plan is Exhibit A to the agreement. It's been changed a couple of times, but the latest version is one I got from the city clerk by a public records request not long ago. And the reason we're concerned is the village at Watson Lake. The last communication I saw from the city showed that to be a 400-unit apartment complex. That's totally inconsistent with the Prescott Lakes Master Plan. And why would Prescott Lakes be concerned? Well, we're--this association is signatory to the agreement with you. We want to be good neighbors and get along, but you know what? We gotta go by the rules. You gotta comply with the agreement and our master plan. It's really important because every person who buys and looks at a home in Prescott Lakes is presented with that master plan, and that's what they expect. Now, on the agreement that I just mentioned, there's no sunset date. It's in perpetuity. And I'm wondering why in the world, with regard to a development like that, no one has contacted the Prescott Lakes Community Association? We have a direct stake in what goes on in Prescott Lakes. The next thing that I'm calling to your attention is that when you look at the city's zoning map online, you'll find that this property is Zone BG parenthetically PAD. If you wonder what that means, all you have to do is go to Section 9.5 of the city's Land Development Code, and you'll see that it's for planned area development. And that section says that the way you tell a land is subject to this section is it's got the letters PAD in capitals parenthetically, and this village at Watson Lakes project is that designation. So the PAD overlay requires that a project go through the Planning and Zoning Commission. It goes--has to go through the council. And we're wondering if that's gonna happen. So you might wonder, why isn't this project consistent with our master plan? The reason is, 400 units is twice as dense as what's shown on the master plan, at least. Our master plan shows a wide area of open space and buffer between Astoria and this development, and it shows an area of open space and buffer between the same development and Highway 89. That's not on the site plan I've seen. Now, maybe there's a later one, and I don't have it. Now, when you go into that section of the city's Land Development Code, the next thing you'll notice is effect of an approved master plan. The master plan that this council, back in 2004, approved, the city attorney assigned it, the mayor signed it, and the city clerk signed it. An approved master plan shall be binding on current and future property owners. So it's binding on whoever develops this property.
Jim, your four minutes is up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But considering the large number of people supporting your concerns, I'll give you another minute to wrap up.
Oh, well, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Let me just say one thing. Some of you know I'm a 43-year city engineer so far. And some time ago, I was able to tell the city council of Pismo Beach that I had gone to first grade in the council chambers. But that said, I was born in Tucson, and my dad was born in Flagstaff. Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, I want to address some of the side issues of what Mr. Garing just brought to your attention. You have the package. Presumably, you've had an opportunity to review the contents of that package. It's voluminous, a lot of detail, and I'm gonna bring to your attention some of the specifics that I want you to be aware of. First of all, as Mr. Garing mentioned, all development within Prescott Lakes shall be in accordance with the amended and restated Development Agreement and the Prescott Lakes Master Plan. And there's no sunset agreement for that agreement. No sunset date on that agreement. It's still in force and will be in perpetuity. The city is processing, as we understand it, a 400-unit apartment development in our neighborhood, right next to the Astoria development. It, in our opinion, is completely in conflict with the Development Agreement and the Prescott Lakes Master Plan. We are signatories to the Development Agreement, and the association's approval is necessary for any development within Prescott Lakes. As Mr. Garing mentioned, it's designated as PG PAD. That violates a number of provisions that are set forth within the Land Development Code. It does not appear that the project is being processed as set forth in the agreement. The general area of this proposed development, Predator Ridge, Astoria, Peregreen, Saddleback Estates, which was formerly Falcon Point, and Astoria Phase 2A, and others. And there's a major development, if you've driven up Prescott Lakes Parkway, the Van Development Company has a major development in force now. The staff, if the staff is unaware of the boundaries of Peak 1, which is the general term for that area, then you should not process a development there until the boundaries are fully understood. Our calculation, and this is an important issue, that there are 26 density units left in Peaks 1 after the development now in progress is complete. There's not enough left for a 400-unit apartment development. The city cannot transfer density units within Prescott Lakes. Only Developer 1 has the authority in the Development Agreement, and water service transfer in Prescott Lakes is an adjunct to the density transfer. The two are not separable. When density units are lost, the water service units are lost. All owners of property within Prescott Lakes, whether such property was acquired before or after the date of the Development Agreement, are subject to the Development Agreement. This includes any property within Prescott Lakes subject to any approval by the commercial association. The city cannot unilaterally change the Prescott Lakes Master Plan. A master plan change must be approved by all remaining signatories to the Development Agreement, including the Prescott Lakes Community Association, and then provided to the city for your review. According to the Development Agreement, the city was committed to provide water service to 2,718 density units. But also in the agreement, the developer would lose 350 of those density units if final plots were not filed by October of 2017. Peaks 1 was the sole developer that did not file final plans by October of 2017, and therefore lost 350 density units. Peaks 1 was allocated 665 density units in the development green and lost 665 units minus 350, giving--
Mr. Brogie, your four minutes is up, but just like Mr. Garing, I'll give you another minute to wrap up.
I'll wrap it up, sir. Thank you. 315 density units were left before subtracting Astoria, and the development now in progress is complete. Therefore, we submit to you that there are not sufficient density water units available for this proposed development. Thank you for your attention. Appreciate it.
Ralph Hess and Bonnie McMinn?
I'm Ralph Hess. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. Bonnie McMinn and I are here to present you with a charter-enabled petition to add prerequisites to leasing city-owned property to the Prescott City Code. It's no secret that there have been concerns with the city leasing city-owned property below market value. I've raised such concerns to city councils occasionally over the past decade, and I've not been alone. Yet, I'm unaware the city taking any action to address such concerns for negotiating future leases, including ensuring compliance with our state constitution's gift clause. The Charter Review Committee was going to consider an amendment addressing leases of city property before it was placed on hiatus until the end of its term, effectively disbanding it. Which brings us to our petition. This charter-enabled petition and proposed ordinance have been created by a group of us as an attempt to address such concerns. I'd like to distribute to you the petition. of Leasing City Property, which reads, "Any new lease, renegotiated lease, or amendment to an existing lease for a period of more than three years of any land, building, or part thereof owned by the City of Prescott shall not be approved unless, the proposed tenant provides its three most recent years of tax returns and audited financial statements, standard financial history documentation of its line of credit, its current three-year business plan, and its fiscal year operating capital budget. And two, the proposed tenant provides a feasibility study prior to approval of any leasehold or tenant modifications or alterations to city-owned property costing a total of $1 million or more over the life of the modification or alteration project. The feasibility study shall set forth in a minimum the viability and expected benefit of the modification or alteration, including market demand, the expected return on investment, operating costs, and future maintenance costs. And three, the City of Prescott has obtained a documented current fair market rental appraisal for the subject property from a firm or individual licensed in the state of Arizona to conduct such an appraisal. A public hearing-- Four, a public hearing to receive public comment is conducted by the Prescott City Council at least 30 days prior to a regular council meeting at which the proposed lease is scheduled for discussion and possible council action. B, the foregoing requirements set forth in Paragraph A shall also apply to any tenant proposal for any leasehold or tenant modifications or alterations to any city-owned property. And C, the City of Prescott shall not lease any city-owned property to any employee of the City of Prescott." What happened to my notes? We hope that you'll approve and adopt this ordinance or a similar one. As stated in our petition, petitioners welcome the opportunity to collaborate with your legal department if you like our concept but wish to modify the proposal. I'll submit the original petition to your city clerk at the conclusion of Bonnie McMinn's remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Bonnie McMinn, speaking as an add-on to this proposal. As members of the Charter Review Committee, Ralph and myself, we have spent considerable time over the past year researching this topic on behalf of the citizens of Prescott. According to the Small Business Association, best practices include precisely what is included in this proposed ordinance. Our informal community outreach has confirmed that the requirements outlined here are not only reasonable, but expected and essential to good fiscal policy and governance. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the input. We'll now move on to our consent agenda. Does any member of the council wish to pull any items off our consent agenda list? Hearing none, then I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda with all the items on it.
Do I hear a second? Second by Mayor Protam. All in favor, please vote. Okay, we'll move on to liquor license.
Public hearing in consideration for a location transfer Series 7 Beer and Wine Bar Liquor License application from Jeffrey Craig Miller, applicant for Prescott Athletic and Social Club, Location 1 Kingswood Drive. Application fees have been paid. Signs have been posted for the required 20 days. Staff has reviewed the applications and determined they are in compliance, and no public comments have been received.
Does any member of the council have any concerns? Councilmember Rusing?
Is this a private club, or will it be open to the public?
That information was not in the application.
It's a pretty big mission, isn't it? Because if it's a public, if it's gonna be public, then it might, there might be a lot of traffic. It could be a bar in the middle of their subdivision. It's all, could be a bar in the middle of their subdivision. Do the neighbors know? Any, anyone know any details? The applicant's not here? The representative's not here?
Do not see anyone here for this application.
Okay.
Well, without a answer to your question, we'll have to move on to a motion.
Mayor, I move that we table this until the next meeting when the applicant or the representative desires to show up and answer a few questions.
All right, we have a motion and a second to table this liquor license application to the next meeting, subject to the attendance of the applicant and/or the agent. So we have motion and a second. Please vote.
Tabling passes four for yes, two for no, and one abstention.
All right, we'll move on to item eight B.
Public hearing and consideration for a new Series Twelve Restaurant Liquor License application from Amy S. Nations, applicant for Wildflower Bread Company, Location 3201 East State Highway 69. Application fees have been paid. The signs have been posted for the required 20 days. Staff has reviewed the application and determined they are in compliance and no public comments have been received.
Well, do we have the applicant or the agent here, present? Anybody on the council have any concerns or comments regarding this application?
Mayor, this is in a commercial area, and I don't think it'll affect any residents. And I, I don't see any reason why we can't vote on it.
Then I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Mayor, I move to recommend approval for liquor license number 302587 for a new Series Twelve Restaurant Liquor License application for Wildflower Bread Company, Location 3201 East State Highway 69.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Please vote. All right, well, we'll move on to the regular agenda item, number nine A.
Adoption of Resolution 2024-1906 declaring the document titled Chapter Three dash one four Development Fees a Public Record and adoption of Ordinance 2024 dash one eight seven five, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Prescott, Yavapah County, Arizona, amending Title Three, Chapter Three dash one four Development Fees, adopting development fees, adding a severance clause, and establishing an effective date.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Lars Johnson, Deputy Finance Director for the City of Prescott. As the clerk read, today is the adoption or possible adoption of the impact fees that we've been working on over the last several months, especially in the public. As a reminder, development impact fees is a charge on new development to pay for construction or expansion of infrastructure improvements to meet the new needs of that new development. The funds collected cannot be used for operations, maintenance, or repair replacement or correct or to correct existing service level deficiencies. Impact fees are paid at the time of issuance of the building permit. Here's the schedule of what the major milestones and public meetings that we've, we've had in consideration of amending impact fees following council's action today. If so approved, the effective date would be January 1st of 2025. The implementation of these rate changes are being proposed as follows. To receive the current impact fee rates, complete permit applications with all required supplemental documents must be received by the end of this calendar year, the last business day by 5:00 p.m. And then that permit then would work through the process to become fully issued by June 30th of 2025. So there's a six-month window for that permit to then become approved. If, if these applicants, applications are received timely before the effective date and issued by July 1st, then they can receive the current existing fees. If not, then they would be subject to the increased fees. There are a few things to consider. Is that per ARS statute on impact fees, developments that have been issued, their first building permit have a 24-month window where they would be subject to current fees anyway. So there, we, we've been working on a list to implement this statute, and right now we have identified eight potential subdivisions that would have this delay effective date. Two of those, though, do have, are kind of landing in that window that we just talked about for implementation, so they would be granted that same effective date of July 1st if the permit's issued.
Councilman Montoya had a question.
Yeah, I guess I just want to know if, if someone is applying for a permit, if they're in like the, the PAC process right now, if they don't get their first permit before July 1st, then they pay the increased rate, is that correct? That might.
So I think we're going to look at the application, building permit being received with all the supporting documents that are needed.
So the application would be the starting point for when they would have the window of 24 months to open?
Well, that, the 24-month is, is when that subdivision was approved originally, so the full plat subdivision. And then once that first building permit's been pulled and approved, then they have 24 months of time.
Yeah, I guess the subdivision part, that's, seems kind of separate for me, I guess, when I'm asking this. Let's imagine that I'm doing an infill project somewhere in Prescott, and I go through the process of requesting a PAC review and doing the permitting process. If I haven't received the new permits, do I pay? If I've gone to schedule my PAC meeting, I've applied my, for my, started the process to apply for permits, but haven't yet received it, will I effectively pay the new rates?
The 24 months applies primarily to previously approved projects that haven't been built out yet.
Okay.
So if you've already had your plat approved and you've started and you have a permit for a, a building permit, then, you know, the third, fourth, fifth, you have 24 months before they become implemented.
Chelsea, do you have something to add?
I do. Thanks. Hi, Mayor and Council, Chelsea Walton, Community Development Director. So, yes, the 24 months is a little bit of a different animal from the regular implementation that Lars was speaking about for other permit applications. So to answer your question, if a commercial project is going through a pre-application conference right now, then they will have up until December 31st of this year at 5:00 p.m. to submit their completed permit application. Now, there's a concern that we'll get a rush of just kind of sloppy work and people just trying to beat the buzzer, if you will. So we are saying that the permit applications that we receive that will be eligible for the 23 or the, the current development impact fees, they must be complete, they must have all of the required submittal permit documentation with them, and then they'll be entered in that, that seven-month timeframe to have a permit issued. So, yes, six complete months for the permit issuance.
From, so?
From, yes, from if they get their permit applied and it's complete in December 31, then they will get those, those fees at the current rate if their permit is issued by June 30 of '25.
Twenty-five, okay.
Correct. And that's because there are some projects where, you know, larger custom homes, they have some changes and things that they go through, and some take longer than six months.
Again, part of the reason I'm asking is, this is probably in the top one or two questions I've gotten since we've been taking up impact fees, is, is I have friends who are, you know, in the process of developing their own home primarily.
Right.
And those folks are kind of curious, like, well, when does this go into effect for me?
Right.
This is helpful. Thank you.
So if I understand you correctly, they'll have until the 31st of December to submit their application for a permit with all the supporting documents?
Yes, sir.
Then there will be another six-month period for community development to review that permit and make sure that it's, it meets all the requirements.
Yes, sir.
At which point a building permit will be issued, and then they have two years to actually complete the construction.
No, sir. The, the completion of the project is contingent on, on other criteria, and the, this pro, this particular conversation is just relative to the payment of the development impact fees. So it is not contingent on them needing to complete the construction. It is only that they must have the permit applications submitted, and then the permit has to be issued by June 30th. And at permit issuance is when we collect those development impact fees.
They have no required completion date?
According to the International Building Codes, yes. There's certain iterations that they have to comply with, but that's not being tracked relative to the development impact fees.
So we're really concerned about how much of impact fees they're going to have to pay?
That's what the, the building community is concerned about, yes.
Very good. Councilmember Rusing?
So, we, we got a letter from a gentleman who's building a single-family custom home, and he's in the process of coming up with plans. And so what, what's his status? Does he have to have everything ready by the end of the year?
Yes, ma'am.
And, and the, where, where, why doesn't this two-year grace period apply to him?
That's a legal question.
Yeah, the two-year grace period only applies to certain types of projects, primarily subdivisions. So this, that two-year period is directly out of statute, and it applies to approved subdivisions. It's, it's kind of different from any single-family house, custom house or so forth, will be subject to the six months that, that Chelsea's talking about. The 24 months is only relevant as to certain subdivisions and commercial projects.
Is this two-year grace period, is it going to be considered a delay so that we won't be collecting as many fees as we should be collecting?
It will only apply to very few subdivisions. I, I think off the top of my head, I can only think of one or two. Did you say eight?
I think there were eight.
There's eight that applies to.
Eight subdivisions? And how many housing units would that be?
Yeah, we don't have that information.
Is it like a thousand homes? Two thousand?
See.
Because, because I'm concerned that someone has negotiated a grace period and everyone's, is going to cause a plat rush.
Yeah.
And that 24 months is mandatory under the statute that we included. So nobody kind of chose to put that in there. The statute says every city that increases its impact fees or establishes new ones must have this language.
Okay, thank you. So it's an Arizona revised statute. Okay, thank you.
And just to, to be clear, there's only a couple hundred of those homes that would apply for this, and most of those are in masqueraded subdivisions. So they're typically under the model home permit process, which is also a faster process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Gamboge.
I'm more confused now than I was at the beginning.
I'm so sorry to hear that.
So let me, let me ask a question.
Yes, sir.
If you submit a plan before December 31st, regardless of development, are you grandfathered with the old impact fees?
What do you mean by regardless of development?
Well, you were saying, Councilman Montoya was talking about an individual home, Joe was talking about developments. If a person is building a home and submits a plan before December 31st, do they pay the old impact fees or the new impact fees?
It depends on where the property is located. So if it's a home within one of these eight subdivisions that Lars was referring to, then you would have up to 24 months to build on any of those properties within those subdivisions to gain the benefit of the current development impact fees.
Have we delineated the eight subdivisions?
Yes. The team is working on it right now. I don't believe it's complete as of yet, but will be ready for when it, when it triggers in December. And my team is working on an implementation policy, just to clarify these things for our customers, because just like you're getting questions, we're going to get questions, and we want to have something in writing for them and available for our staff to readily answer these questions.
Mayor, if I could, I don't think we're confused enough, so I thought I'd add a little more to try to make it more confusing. Definitely the implementation plan that Lars presented on this slide is totally different than the 24 months. The 24 months is for residential development, and it's not 24 months from today. It's not 24 months from January, it's 24 months from when the first permit was issued. And as we look at those subdivisions, some of those first permits were issued 20 months ago, so they only have four months to get building permits at the lower rate, and some of them were issued 12 months ago, and so on. So it's not 24 months, so it's not as big and, and a problem that it might sound like. And again, I, I don't know if Councilman Montoya was talking about a commercial development. Commercial development is different than the residential. Commercial development and industrial development is based on approval of the development. It doesn't deal with the site plan at all. So if you approved, I don't know, a QT, they have 24 months from whenever that was approved, nothing to do with the permits. So it's a little different. There aren't hardly any of those, so.
Thank you, Mark. I think you succeeded in confusing us more. I think it's important that you identify these areas and have that list published as quickly as possible, because I know there's going to be many more questions related to this, and if we can reference the developments and the number of units that it would apply, then I think the public in general would be much more well-advised on what can or can't be done to affect their particular potential home.
Mr. Mayor, would it be prudent to postpone a decision on this item?
I don't think we can.
And, and just to clarify, Mayor, as we have done the numerous times before when we've done this, we will solidify these subdivisions, and we will notify the developers in writing that this subdivision is under the old fees until this date type of thing, which is what we've done the last numerous times that we've adopted.
Yeah, I know Councilman Gamboge asked the same question last week, and there are very specific timelines and dates that have to be met in order for this change of development fees to be legally enacted. Is that correct, Joe?
That's correct. So you don't have to take action today, but if you don't take action, then we restart back at the notice of intent stage, so it puts it out 90 days roughly. So that's where, and we have, I think, four days left?
Yeah, until Saturday, the 12th. And again, the 24 months is statutory, as, as Joe pointed out, so it doesn't really, there's nothing council can do about those, of that requirement. It's, it's put on us by the state legislature, so not to minimize it, but it is what it is. There's nothing we can do to change it.
Well, I think with the explanation that we just received, knowing that there's only about 130-some potential. only about 130-some potential home sites impacted, then I think just publishing that will help people understand, but it doesn't change what the conditions are for anybody that's looking to develop a single home site. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, single-site development outside of those areas, this is really going to be the guiding timeline for them. And we'll, again, we'll publish what we mean by completed permit applications. You know, we have submittal checklists online to make sure that what we receive by December 31 is complete and able to enter the review process. And we're also looking into an on-call contract to help with review in case there's an influx of submittal applications, which we're somewhat anticipating, and with an influx and a rush, it may be poorer quality that we receive. So we're preparing for all of those scenarios.
Yeah, I don't think there's any intention within the city to slow-walk any of these applications, although I heard that being mentioned to someone who contacted me saying that maybe the city wants to be able to generate more revenue by slow-walking some of this permit application review. So let's make it clear that we're going to try to accommodate every single application that comes through, and if we end up with maybe a large number, we're prepared to go outside and even have an outside support for permit review.
Yes, sir. If that's what it takes, we'll get it prepared, and that might come before you at a later date for approval.
All right, so keep us informed as this issue develops. Councilwoman Ferworth?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Chelsea and Lars and everyone coming up with this implementation proposal that had been an expressed concern on multiple fronts from people, including the homeowner who sent us an email earlier today. So I think this is fair, you know, get it done by December 31, and it gives us plenty of time to work through the issues, as long as everyone operates with quality and timeliness. So this is even more fair than I would have given, but I could live with this and approve what you've done. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Mayor Protem?
You know, I also wanted to kind of just reiterate some of the things that we've been hearing, either through email or phone calls, contacts, just even this morning on the radio. I want to remind everybody that, again, that this does not apply to the average homeowner. This applies directly to developers or people building custom homes or homes in these developments only. Nobody else pays this, it's not a property tax. An impact fee is exactly what it says it is. It's to mitigate the impacts of growth. We hear a lot about growth paying for growth. Growth, this is a way to do that. This should have been paid for a long time ago. I don't think we'd be in the condition that we are in right now with police and fire had we been collecting these fees, going back to when we were allowed to, and it's been several years. The cost of providing infrastructure, and that's water, wastewater, roads, police and fire, is never going away. The question is, do you want to pay 100% of it, or do you want to help paying this by the people that are providing the growth? This is the developers. So these fees, while they're not huge, they're not going to cover everything, they do help. And we do need to be able to do this, because this is an attempt to help the developers who are building the developments and making the money, help us, you, the taxpayer, pay for the cost of providing these services. So I want everybody to try to understand that. We've just, it's amazing to me that people don't understand that this is not going to affect them. So I just wanted to say it one last time. If you have a home, this does not affect you. If you build a home, it does affect you, because you are building in, generally, in our communities here, in a planned area development. So everything has to be provided to those developments. And right now, you know that we are in a position of not being able to provide adequate police and fire in those developments. So that will be up to you when this 478 comes along to make that decision. Do you want to pay 100% for this, or do you want to have help from 60% to 64% of non-Prescott residents? So anyway, I just want to make sure that's clear. One last time, one last opportunity, thank you.
Councilmember Rusing?
Thank you. Last time I checked with a contractor who's been here for many years, he said it still takes him like three or four months to get a single-family custom home approved. And so I was wondering if you do get a backlog, like by March 1st, is there any way you could give us a heads-up, and maybe we could have those, you know, homes, you know, kind of have an extension, get an extension or something after the June, the June date? Because you may have a backlog if it takes three or four months to approve a home, and say you have 50 applications or something. Just wondering what you think about that.
So my initial response will be, we're going to prepare so we don't get there. So we monitor reviews every week. Our teams pay very close attention to what we have going on. Unfortunately, not like the private sector, we can't just hire people when we have, you know, more work than we have people for. But with preparing with an on-call service contract, what we will likely do is at round one, we'll start looking at how many we're receiving, and then immediately just ship those out. So instead of waiting until we get the backlog, we'll look at upon application, if we feel like we're getting a little bit more than we can get reviewed in this timeframe especially, we'll make sure that those are reviewed, and as much as depends on us are issued. Because there is a part to be played on the private side here. I've seen permits linger for eight, 10 months, because they're waiting on the design team. And, you know, granted, that might be a custom house, or that might be a large commercial, but there is a role to be played by the private-side developer, contractor, their design professionals to return the plans to us so we can review them. But as much as depends on us, we will make sure that that backlog doesn't happen, and that we don't penalize folks with regard to these deadlines.
All righty, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ferworth?
Thank you, Mayor. I had two other technical questions, as I read through the wonderful ARS statute. Following Point F came this interesting Point G. And so it talks about when you're doing impact fee renewal, you either have to use an advisory committee, so that helped inform me what the heck happened in 2019, or you get to use a biennial certified audit by qualified professionals who are not employees or officials of the municipality. I don't believe we used an advisory committee this round. So what are our plans for this biennial audit, and when should a council expect to see the results?
Good question, Councilmember. We have been doing biennial audits since the statute requirement came out. This biennial cycle is now, so our auditors have been working on it as of a few weeks ago. That report should be published beginning of December.
Is that our outside auditors, the firm that we use? They'll do this too?
Right. We added on to the services they provide, so they do our financial statements audit as well as our impact fee audit.
Fabulous. And we'll get then a chance to review that when their audit is done.
Right.
All the past ones are on our website.
Yep. Well, it's, okay, it would be something that, I think, given what's going on here with this round of, it would be interesting that we actually do get a chance to review it, even if it's at a study session, the statute allows us as a council to be able to do that if we'd like. And I just think it would be useful in the spirit of being transparent with the community.
Okay. Yeah, and like Mark said, we do publish the results of all the audits on our webpage under Budget and Finance.
Councilwoman Gambogie?
I had two questions.
Okay, please continue.
Thank you. So my second question, again, was about city code. So I appreciated getting that information in the packet, and I had one question here, and it talks about imposition of fees, 3-14-7, Section B. And it says, "The city manager and applicant for a building permit may agree upon the dedication of land or other capital improvements in lieu of a fee required pursuant to this chapter, provided the value of such space," which I'm assuming is land, "and improvements as determined by the city manager is substantially equal to or greater than the amount of the fee required by this chapter. In light of Prop 478 and how much we're looking to build the fees into our financial plan, how often has this part of our city code actually been used?"
It has not been used often. It is also a requirement of the statute. The statute requires that if you require a developer to put land aside for a new fire station that is part of the impact fees you're collecting from everybody, they receive a credit against the impact fees that they would pay that is equivalent to that. So having it in our code is just reiteration of what's in the state law.
Okay, so that example-
And it hasn't really happened that often.
Okay, that example makes sense to me. But the only thing I was surprised that we didn't have in our city code, not the state law, was because we do have the requirements, especially, you know, that we have open space for subdivisions and planned area developments.
We don't collect an open space tax.
Pardon me?
We do not, I'm sorry, we do not collect an open space impact fee.
No, 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 you misunderstand my point. I was wondering why the code didn't say that if they're going to dedicate land, it needs to be above city open space requirements. And it doesn't say that right now.
I believe since it's in the development impact fees, it's related. I don't have it in front of me, but I'm pretty sure it's related to those improvements that are required as part of that, but we can-
I just think if we're in the, we're going to have to touch this code anyhow when we vote today. This will all have to be updated. And so just, you know, a question over to Joe, if we can be specific on 3-14-7B to make sure that any dedication of land is well above what their minimum requirements are for dedicating open space to us.
And for state law, I believe it has to be related to the improvements that you're collecting impact fees for.
It does, but I think to the extent that what you're saying is, we already require open space, and so the extraction that would offset impact fees has to be above that open space requirement, I think we can clarify that in the code. That will, we'll come back to council on that, but-
Thank you, I appreciate it. I just think being specific is good, and then there'll be no misinterpretation.
Councilman Gambogie?
May I defer my comments to the understaffed report?
Certainly. Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. Lars, do you still have more to present?
I did have, just to review the fees and what they're going up as, but-
Then I will defer as well, thank you.
Councilmember Rusing?
Thank you. I too had concerns with this Section 3-14-7 imposition of fees. As I read it, it gives the city manager a lot of leeway. For example, he can determine how much the value of the property is, and it doesn't, as determined by the city manager, without an appraisal. And this section had no transparency, no oversight, no public input, no city council input. It's something that the city manager could just do between him and the developer. And I was somewhat surprised at the leeway that the city manager was given. Is there any way that we could maybe wordsmith this and bring this section back? Because I have a lot of concerns, because I, you know, it just smells of potential for a back-room deal, and I wonder if in the past there were back-room deals. I mean, we'll never know, because there's no transparency.
What I would say is a twofold answer to that. The first is that these types of extractions and offsets are done through contract development agreements, which have to be approved by council. So no contract can be done by city manager himself, even though city manager can negotiate those types of deals, he's not the final say, because it's contractual and it has to come to council. So while, you know, I don't know of something that happened in the past, I would say that just functionally it wouldn't happen. But I will say, that's one of those things we can also clarify, and if we're coming back to council about the code rather than about the impact fees, we can put the, I took a note, and we can talk about that as well.
Okay, thank you.
That can be brought back for a future study session and a vote on altering our city code that is really, in this case, separate from what we're considering today.
It is separate, and I don't want to get too deep into kind of changes we want to make to code, but I will take it in note and we'll bring it back to you.
Yeah, I think clarification is always a good idea. Do you want to proceed, Lars?
Yes, thank you. The other point I didn't mention yet on this slide was that our water resources fee is going down from what you saw previously, and that's as a result of the refinancing of the revenue bond that will actually be closing tomorrow. So we were able to realize a net savings on that bond refinancing of about $450,000. That then translated to a reduced fee that is in these amounts that you would be considering today. The differences on the slide are, it's minor, but it's something. $17 lower on the 5/8 meter, so that's a residential, and then the highest end at the 8-inch meter at $900 lower. Something to mention on this also is that all the delay in fee changes that we talked about, the current fee, so those that are eligible for the delay in the fee changes, they will receive this lower fee on this item. It's only for the increased portion that the delay happens. So in other words, the fee schedule for our current fee will be reducing right away on this particular item. Okay.
So what you're saying is that if there's a reduction, they'll see that in January, but if there's an increase, then the wait period will apply?
Correct. It's minor, but it's lowering the fee. So looking at the full fee change, this is for residential now, we have the current and the proposed up on the slide. The fees would be going up roughly $8,000 per category. Residential fees are assessed on three different tiers of square footage of the house. You can see on this proposed column that the largest increase is coming from our wastewater system fee and our streets fee. So those are plan-based studies that have projects identified, needed projects, and then the fees are then calculated. And then I had a few slides of the full fee schedule for full disclosure and potential discussion if council would like. We have the current fee schedule for nonutility, which is our streets, fire, and police. These fees were adopted May 14, 2019, and they were effective August 1 of 2019. This is what's in place today. And then the proposed increased fees are here. Then on the utility side, this is by meter size. And here's the current fee schedule and the proposed fee schedule. And that would conclude my background comments. I'd take any additional questions if you have any.
Well, I can say that I individually took on this project about six years ago, when I tried to convince Arizona League of Cities and Towns to make an exception to smaller communities on the details of how to be able to collect impact fees at that time. The barriers and the hurdles were so onerous to be able to track the timeframes, collecting of impact fees, and then being able to apply those impact fees to any proposed improvement that had to be completed within 10 years. And if it wasn't completed within 10 years, then the city would be subject to refunding all of those impact fees to whoever paid it. Now, you can imagine if somebody bought a house in a planned area development over a period of 10 years, you'd have the developer, you'd have the builder, you'd have the first owner, maybe a second owner, maybe a third owner. Who would you send the money back to if you didn't complete that project? So even though there's been references to the claim that they couldn't provide any improvements for police and fire, what they really meant was, if they needed a new fire station, and it was going to cost $5 or $10 million, they may not be able to collect the total amount to build that station and complete it within 10 years. So consequently, they felt they- So consequently, they felt they wouldn't approve the recommended impact fees. That's probably a legitimate claim, but that still doesn't say that you didn't need a fire station. If you could only collect maybe half the money to build it, then you'd have to go out and find the other half somewhere else and make sure you kept up with the need for police and fire locations, so that we'd not have this declining response time that's so concerning to us in Proposition 478. However, the Arizona League decided not to adopt that proposal and to bring it towards the legislature, because they felt that the building lobby was so incredibly strong that they'd never be able to get it to, to the legislature for a vote. And then a couple of years later, they, they reduced the demand or requirement that these projects be completed within 10 years. At that point, they said, if you were in the process of building it, then you had more time to complete it after that. But that was only, what, three years ago, I believe?
Was it 2018?
Three or four?
Yeah.
Six? It just, the point was, it made it so incredibly difficult for small communities to be able to impose these fees according to the regulations that were existing at the time. I wanted them to exempt any, any city that was $50,000 or less, $50,000, how about a 50,000 population or less, from having to meet these hurdles. Because otherwise, if you've got a big development in Phoenix that's maybe 5,000 homes, then you'd have enough impact fees to be able to build some of those infrastructure projects. But if you have a smaller community that maybe has a 200 or 300-home development, there's simply not enough fees to be able to fund the necessary infrastructure that you're proposing. So that's why we are in the position we're in today, and we're trying to do a catch-up with 478, and then having these impact fees be legitimate to make sure we stay up with the growth that happens. Councilman Gambogi and Moore, you're still waiting? Okay, I think Councilmember Ruasing has another comment.
Eric, you're welcome to go first.
I think I'd just like to make some summary comments. We've seen these numbers for several months now. This is not, any of the information that's been presented today is not new information to us, and it's time for a vote. And I guess the comment that I want to make is, while it's a significant increase, we're talking $7,000 increase over the current fee structure, I think as a council, we have a responsibility to our community that we need to raise these fees, we need to adopt this fee schedule. We would be derelict in our duty to say, no, we won't adopt this new fee schedule, but citizens, we want you to pass a proposition to raise sales tax so that we can pay for these improvements. I think if we were to not pass this resolution today, we would lose the confidence of the voters, who would say, you had an opportunity to raise impact fees, to have growth, pay for growth, and you voted against it, why would we vote in favor of a proposition to increase sales tax? So I'm going on the record that while it's a big increase, I think we have to do this, and the time is now. Thank you.
Councilman Gambogi.
I didn't join city council to make Prescott a more expensive place to live in. I think Lars did a wonderful job of detailing all the fees and taxes that are coming before the council and before the voters. I think we wouldn't be in this pickle if we found out a way to generate more revenue. But in lieu of that, and there's no math, I'm a math guy, and I can't come up with any formula on these impact fees, but I think we ought to be a little more reasonable. I think, I think Deb Thalassidis spoke before council some time ago and said, well, when the impact fees were low, there was no affordable housing, and we're going to talk about affordable housing on the next item. And I contend that all these items are linked. We're talking about impact fees, that's going to make housing more expensive. So given the fact we're not generating revenue, I'd be in favor of the impact fees, but maybe at a reduced 70% rate instead of 100%.
Councilmember Ruasing?
Thank you. I have a question for Lars. The Raf Telus report speaks about section Area A and Area B, and I understand Area A is Chino Valley, and Area B is, we used to have many other areas, but everything's now been condensed into one area, which is the city of Prescott, unincorporated areas. And I was confused, now, does that include the Avify Prescott Indian Tribe lands? Do they pay development impact fees, even though we supply them with water? Does this apply to them? Are they, are they in the Area B too? I was, I was a little confused how this applied to them.
Looks like Gwen's coming up to answer. Come on up, Gwen.
It's a team effort, right? Gwen Roach, Public Works Director. So over the years, the, the city has changed its position with, as it relates to the tribe. They do pay the impact, the development, the impact on the system fee, but they do not pay the water resource fee, because they have the legal right to the water under their 1994 settlement agreement. So they do not pay the resource fee, but they do pay the, the portion of the treatment plant that they use, and the portion of the water production facility. Those are separate, so there are three fees that you pay, under the utility impact fees. So they do pay the development impact fee for water and for wastewater, but not the resource fee. And they pay it based on the meter size, just like anyone else.
Okay. All righty, well, thank you for that clarification. I'd like to read a letter that we received from a concerned citizen. "To the mayor and council members, how will it look if you fail to pass the increase in development impact fees to be shared by those developers profiting from their developments, so as to reach a level more closely in line with the costs of new development requiring more new infrastructure? I hope that you will vote in favor of bringing the development impact fees to an appropriate level that takes the burden off of the Prescott residents who have borne an unfair share of it for over a decade. If not, I believe that Prop 478 will likely fail to pass. Thank you for your consideration."
Councilmember Forworth?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to direct the city manager and staff to think about, and this is meant to address potentially Councilmember Gambogi's concern, but I do think that similarly to what the city did in the past to attract a revenue sales tax generating warrior like Costco, that with our new emerging economic development strategy, we should be considering incentives that, that drive business that is part of our strategic plan. And whether that be, you know, certain kinds of businesses or industries, or whether that be potentially this being part of something we think about for workforce housing. But I don't want to lower everything, since we don't even have a clear understanding right now of what workforce housing will be. So I'd rather go in and approve what we have today, and then think about our economic development strategy incentives, renewal of that plan to address those things. So that's my first comment. My second comment is, I'm not voting yes today in order to stop growth. I'm voting yes to ensure that new growth pays strictly for their fair share of that growth's impact on infrastructure. It's a shame our state statutes don't allow us also to consider the operations to operate that infrastructure, but it doesn't. And unfortunately, you know, we've gone through this for multiple months now, inflation is negatively affecting everyone, and it's also affecting the city, especially our costs regarding infrastructure and public safety services. So sales tax has not kept up with this kind of rapid inflation. Our current sales tax, we can no longer afford to under-recover necessary impact fees, and that's my thoughts for what I'll be doing today.
Councilman Montoya?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Ted's comments. I didn't, I also didn't join council to make it more expensive to live in Prescott. I don't think any of us did. I think what's hard is, these impact fees are necessary at the end of the day, and I appreciate what Eric said about it, and also Lois. I think it's, we have to take action on this. I think it's very contradictory to ask our residents to be in favor of a pretty sizable tax increase without showing that we're willing to really hold new development accountable to, I don't even think it's accurate personally to say, because of the operation costs you bring up, Lois, Lois, I don't even think it's accurate to say, pay for, quote, their fair share. We're just getting a portion of their share, realistically. But if they come, they'll be taxpayer residents who contribute to sales tax, so they'll be paying their fair share then, I guess. But it's a, it's a hard issue, and, and I, you know, I've talked to business owners who've said that, you know, this will have, the increase in, in impact fees will have an impact on future business development as well. And so I really appreciate what Lois said about this idea of being creative with incentive, incentive approaches that we take to new businesses, whether that's, you know, I don't, I don't know that we're going to get another Costco, but another, as you called it, a sales tax generating machine like Costco, or even, you know, a little brother to that. I think we have to be creative, and that is a big driver. You know, to, to Councilman Gambogi's point, I think we really have to approach this from a two-pronged approach, which is, the real driver is economic development in our community going forward, and that is how we are going to pay for a lot of the necessary services we have in our community, and we have to think outside of the box of how we've traditionally done that. And so this is one piece of that approach. You know, we got to hold new development accountable, and so I'll be supporting this as well today. But I think we have to think creatively when it comes to new business and bringing, attracting, and any, and frankly, even retaining business in our community. So those are my thoughts.
Mayor Protam?
I want to address this issue also. We, as a council, we can adopt a policy, adopt ordinance, whatever you want to talk about it, to incentivize new business coming to Prescott. We can use the impact fees as a carrot, you know, to dangle in front of their face and say, we're going to let you not pay the impact fees. But we have to pay the impact fees, one way or the other. So what that means, if we let, you know, a company or a Costco off the hook for impact fees, we still have to pay it out of the taxpayer dollars. But the Costco, and I'm only using that as an example, can come to us with the amount of money that they would generate, you know, a plan or a study, and we can weigh that as a council, whether or not it, it's worth it to incentivize that, because at the end of the day, if the Costco comes in, the taxpayer is greatly reimbursed by putting up, if you will, the impact fees in the beginning as an incentive. The same thing goes for workforce housing. Any developer can walk in here and ask to be, to have, be excluded from paying the impact fees. We have to weigh if that's going to be a good enough thing for us to take those taxpayer dollars to pay those impact fees. They do have to be paid, but that's up to us. So this does not, and remember, we've had severely reduced impact fees, and we have zero workforce housing. Nobody has stepped up to do workforce housing in spite of the fact that we've had very few impact fees, comparatively speaking, to other communities, that have actually been able to attract workforce housing. We have, people have to understand, the workforce housing issue is a very complicated issue. The impact fees pay, play a very small part of it. We're studying that, as you know, I'm the council liaison to the Workforce Housing Committee. It's a very, very complicated issue, but why we have no workforce housing in this community is not predicated on the impact fees at all. But again, if they come in front of us and they say, you know, I've got this 100-unit workforce housing, I'd like you to pay the impact fees, we can decide if it's worth it or not. So it's, it's not, if we impose these impact fees, this is not tying our hands behind our back in any way, shape, or form. This has to be considered on a case-by-case basis. Thank you.
I agree, Mayor Protam. I think development incentives can be deliberated and designed by this council as a separate policy. So let's keep that in mind as something that we might want to work on, to put something like that together as some of these areas in North Prescott continue to develop, and we want to be able to attract high-quality retail development in those areas, since we're so dependent on transaction, sales tax for our general fund and most of our revenue in this city. I think at this point, I'd like to be able to take some public comment, if we have any.
We have one for Sandy Griffiths.
Council, hi, thank you for your time today. I'm not here to say no-
Excuse me, Sandy, Sandy, could you raise the microphone, please?
Is this okay? I'm not here today to dispute, dispel, or say no to impact fees. I said that the very first time this started months ago. I'm not here to stamp my feet and pound my fist and dispel and dispute everything that you've said. I applaud you for all those comments and your concerns. This is a big deal. I am a little concerned, and I don't have the answer to this, and you don't either. I'm hoping that this large, heavy ask of impact fee increase does not hamper growth, and we have to keep our eyes on it, because if we see any downfall in growth possibly, potentially due to these fees, we have to react somehow and take corrective action. We don't know what's going to happen. I, I'm not the economist. I don't have the nexus rationale to figure all of that out. But as a council and as a community, we have to watch this, because it's serious. These fees, and I know you know this, are not going to pay for a fire station. It might pay for a little concrete driveway. It's going to be years with collection of these fees to get a new fire station, so we need to continually think out of the box, continually. And I'm asking you to do that. We will walk beside you to make this happen. We'll collectively work together. This is a big ask, and I know you know that. I appreciate what Councilman Gambogi said, because I had the same thought process, and I know you're not going to change the, the impact fee amount today. It's going to sail right through. But if there was any consideration to even think about maybe bringing in a percentage for year one, maybe it's 35%, maybe it's 50%. Councilman Gambogi, I believe you said 70%. Would we be doing ourselves justice? Would we be cutting our nose off despite our face if we did that? I don't know, but thank you for bringing that up, because maybe that would not potentially hamper growth, and we cannot afford to have our growth in the city of Prescott hampered. I do have a concern over Ms. Walton's statement that all permits need to be issued by June 30th of 2025 in order to receive the lower impact fee rate. They're submitted by year end, but if they're not issued by June 30th of 2025, they don't get that lower cost. We have never, ever put that type of tie on permit issuances for impact fees. So I would like you to- So, I would like you to consider that. There's two sides, the city side and, yes, the private sector side with permits. There's a lot going on with engineering and plans. And engineering companies are out four, five, six weeks, a month, two months, three months. We cannot tie that to the developer for permits to be issued in six months. It's not happening now without any impact fees. We have certain scenarios where it takes longer to get a permit, and I still feel that we should follow that accordingly and not put a tie on it. So, I appreciate your vote. I know what you're going to do. I support you. I wish that we could do a percentage, but I understand. So, it's a hard decision, but keep up the good work.
Thank you, Sandy. All right, I think we're ready to entertain a motion here.
Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2024-1906.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote.
Councilman Gamboji.
Yea.
Passes 7-0.
And Mayor, I move to adopt Ordinance Number 2024-1875.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote.
Councilman Gamboji.
Yea.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you. We'll now move on to Item 9P.
Presentation, discussion, and possible action regarding a dedicated workforce housing position.
A little shorter. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Amber. I'm the staff liaison for the Workforce Housing Committee. Our chair apologized. He is under the weather today, so you get me. So, today, we're here to talk about a possible dedicated workforce housing position. Earlier this year, the city was awarded $200,000 from the Arizona State Housing Trust Fund for a housing needs assessment and creation of a housing plan and implementation plan and any connected costs and activities. We have received three quotes, and we'll be working with the Elliott D. Pollak and Company on the housing needs assessment to be completed by March. Prescott Valley actually received the same grant and will be using the same company. So, though we will get a specific to Prescott view, we're also going to get a regional view as well. Their contract is for $46,100, leaving approximately $153,900. And that's just for their contract with us. And per the contingencies in the funding agreement that council addressed earlier this year, the city will hire a workforce housing program manager to oversee all aspects of the housing plan. This role may be filled by either a permanent city employee or a contracted position. The Workforce Housing Committee recommends using the remaining funds to hire a full-time city employee to address the growing and future demand for workforce housing. They believe the issue is significant enough to warrant a dedicated position demonstrating the city's commitment to finding solutions. So, today, we are here asking council for your direction or your action on if you would like to have a full-time city employee, a contract employee, or a contracted position through a consulting firm. That's all I have.
Mayor Protam.
Yeah, I wanted to speak to this issue. Again, I am the council liaison to the Workforce Housing Committee. One of the things that I have discovered in looking around is what a person with these qualifications gets paid. We have a $200,000 grant. The workforce housing issue is prolific. We're not the only state that has a problem. It's all through the country. So, we find ourselves in a shortage of people that are qualified to do this. They range anywhere from $120,000 a year up to $140,000, depending upon their qualifications. So, if you take the $46,000 for the study, you take the, you know, trying to attract an employer, an employee, we have one year of money, maybe, with the rest of the grant. So, I was really going to talk to everybody about the possibility of a contractual agreement with a company who actually does this work. And not only would we have the ability to tap into the many issues that are going to come up in our community because we are, we have our own particular issues here, we would have the ability to tap into all the knowledge of the large firm or a firm, even of a midsize. So, they'd be able to offer us a lot more information and work, I think, going through a firm than hiring one person because we would have to probably disclose, if we went out to find a person, that we only have enough money to hire you for one year. And then, it's going to have to come back to council or to the committee to decide whether or not we want to keep this person on and, you know, begin a full-time contract with whoever it is. So, I think for us right now, it's not that we couldn't do that later and try to attract more grants. And maybe that person would have grant-writing abilities to be able to pay for themselves going forward. But I just think at this point, there's too much unknown, and I would like to expand the ability for, by hiring a firm so that we can really take a deep dive into what it's going to take to attract this workforce housing in our community. I just wanted to kind of let the council members understand that.
Councilmember Ru Singh.
You know, I agree with Connie. I think that's a great idea to hire a dedicated company. This is all they do, and they would be able to keep up with all the latest grants with HUD housing and would probably be a great resource as to who would be able to bring this project to fruition. And, you know, if we did hire somebody for just a year as a city employee, then we'd have to pay him benefits, and so that would really start adding up. And, you know, there probably is a lot of competition for this position. And I don't know if we would think about maybe making it a $75,000 a year for two years, you know, with a subcontractor. But I think that's a great idea to get a dedicated firm. This is all they do, and I think this city is very sincere in getting some workforce housing and would be willing to partner with experts, so to speak.
Councilman Gamboji.
Going back to my days on the Planning Commission, we've looked at affordable housing for years and years and years. Saddlewood was supposed to be affordable housing, and to my knowledge, we don't have one policeman, one fireman, one teacher, or one healthcare worker living in Saddlewood. There was a proposal on Ross Road to put affordable housing, and the residents came out in droves and said, "No, we don't want it here." And now, we have this proposal from the federal government to give us money to pursue affordable housing. And I guess I'm coming full circle on this. I don't know that we, there's an answer out there. When I did research on this, what I learned is there's 7 million, a shortage of 7 million affordable homes. It's, there is no state or county where a renter working full-time can afford a two-bedroom apartment. So, it's not unique to Prescott. But we create some of our problems. For example, we have, I think, 550 homes that people rent, short-term rentals. That could house a lot of people. So, I'm in favor of this proposal. But I don't hold out a lot of hope for it because I think the problem in affordable housing is much more complicated than we're giving it credit for. I think affordable housing is linked to the other issues we have. The more we make this place expensive, the less likely we are to be successful at affordable housing. If we were successful at affordable housing, the thing I like is less people would live in Chino and less people would live in Prescott Valley, and there would be less traffic on 89 and less traffic on 69, which should appeal to just about everybody here. So, I support the proposal. I would like to see it... I don't like taxing, and I don't like spending. So, I'd like to see it come from our own city staff.
Councilwoman Forworth.
Thank you, Mayor. Besides the instant expertise that Councilwoman Ru Singh and Mayor Protam can help me brought up, I also am interested in having this be contracted relationship because honestly, the only other thing that concerns the heck out of me is what's going to happen on November 5th and what's going to happen with our Plan B and how that's going to affect all employees in our general fund pool. And so, I would like to have this not turn into a place where we don't put expertise. And so, the consultants will provide that expertise, and we'll provide it no matter what happens in the rest of the city on November 5th with the election of Prop 478.
Well, thank you. I also agree. I think we're far too premature to even consider hiring a full-time staff member to work on this idea. I've sat in on quite a few of the Workforce Housing Committee meetings, and they continue to struggle with coming up with any type of reasonable steps in that direction, much less coming up with a solution. I know there's been a home of your own concept that the county has adopted. That's something that the city might be able to replicate in a certain way. It certainly isn't a broad solution, but it's a way of maybe reducing the cost of some homes to be able to get to and put to a point where one of our first responders or other people that are essential to the city might be able to approach affording that. And I think there's, as Councilman Gamboji said, this is a very, very broad-based problem all over the state and even surrounding states. Even the vice presidential debate that happened last week, one of the candidates brought up the issue of how housing is being impacted by a lot of the problems we have with immigrants coming across the border and taking more of the low-cost housing out of circulation or out of availability. So, certainly, I think in this case, since we do have this grant and since we're statutorily required to come up with a housing assessment every couple of years, that part of it has to be done. So, with the remaining amount, I think it would be appropriate that we contract with a consulting firm that has a broader understanding of what other options might be in process of either being developed or actually created somewhere else in the state or even maybe in our neighboring states, Utah, New Mexico, et cetera. And if we can come up with maybe a better idea of where we might be able to make a step in that direction, then we might find out about that through a consulting firm that specializes in this area. Those are my comments.
Well, Mayor, then I'll make, I move to approve hiring a contract employee or consulting firm.
Well, I'll second that motion.
Second.
Do we have any public comment?
We do not, Mayor.
All right. So, we have a motion, a second, please vote.
Passes 6-0.
Thank you for your time on that.
Well, according to my agenda here, I think that's the end of our meeting. But I do have a quote here, I think is appropriate and timely.
Mr. Mayor, point of order. How many people do we have here?
How many people do we have here?
How many councilors are here? Six? Oh, I didn't see Eric left. I'm sorry.
Yeah, he had a doctor's appointment. "Those who want our independence valued liberty as an end and as a means. They believed liberty to be the secret of happiness and courage to be the secret of liberty." This came from Supreme Court Justice Louis Brandeis during the period of World War I. So, as we consider our upcoming votes, let's keep those ideas in mind. This meeting is adjourned.